All right, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of June 7th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next submission of minutes of previous meetings, Items A, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve previous minutes?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council, is an advertised public hearing. This considers the petition of John Ferreira, Thames Hospitality LLC, doing business as Dirty Water Pub, 198 Thames Street, request council consideration for transfer of the Class BV intoxicating beverage license to Maria Elterra, East Bay Enterprises LLC, doing business as Guillory's Tap House. This would be a new owner, a new name, and you have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Andrew Tyne for East Bay Enterprises LLC.
Welcome, Andrew.
Hi, Andrew Tyne for East Bay Enterprises LLC. I'm minority owner of the business myself. A majority owner is here also, Maria Elterra. And yeah, we're looking for a transfer of the liquor license, obviously, from the old business to the new business so that we can open up a completely new business called Guillory's Tap House.
Could you tell us a little bit about it, what your plans are there? I know we have it in front of us, but because it's a public hearing, if you could chair requested hours, such and so forth.
I think the hours will be similar to the previous operation. We plan on trying to, we are going to have a new menu, try to serve more food, better food than was previously served by the last establishment. We plan on doing craft beer and local beer, things of that nature. Plan on having music certain nights of the week, maybe Friday nights, Saturday nights, things of that nature. Insides being cleaned up, painted, similar layout to previous operation. That's about it.
Mary?
Yes.
A couple of questions because I'm sure you are aware that in the past, in past iterations, there have been various problems with that particular location. So I'm not holding that against you, just want to make sure that you're aware of that. So who will be running it full time? Will Ms. Elterra be leaving her current job and running that?
I mean, I don't know if she's leaving her current job or whether she'll work two jobs or not. Not really sure of that situation. We obviously have a full-time chef. Ron Kopinski's going to be a day manager there. So between Mr. Kopinski and Ms. Elterra, they'll probably take on the heavy lifting of the operation.
Are you, do you have restaurant experience?
I don't. I'm a lawyer. I don't know anything except about eating.
Except about what?
About eating, yes.
Okay. So who are, what is the background on some of the partners? I mean, does anybody else have restaurant, I mean, of the LLC people?
There's four partners and Maria Elterra, she has experience, obviously. She's been in the business for a long period of time. Edmund is a doctor and the other individual, Matthew, is a lawyer also.
Okay.
So I don't believe any of the other three have restaurant experience.
Okay. Are we going to just take up the dancing and entertainment license separately or we're going to merge these all together?
We can move them forward, but we'll close the public hearing before we do that, yeah.
You should probably consider them separately if you have separate concerns, but this is still the public hearing.
No, I just had a question. Can I just ask one other question on the entertainment part? Do you have any ideas exactly what you would be doing there? Or would you be limiting the entertainment or be willing to limit it to particular nights of the week?
I think we'd probably be willing to limit it to particular nights of the week. I mean, mainly we're looking Thursday, Friday, Saturday, possibly Sunday during the day like Aiden's does next door, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to follow up the dance and entertainment later, but just for this one, the floor plan is the same as the original conceptual design.
Correct. The floor plan hasn't changed.
We see your menu and you mentioned the hours are the same.
I believe the hours.
Because I will look to the police that these will concur with the same hours each and every day of the past establishment. And this is only to get, for us to have that understanding and the public to have that knowledge. And also, I'll end with, the doors have been closed over there, so thank you for taking on this initiative.
Thank you.
My colleagues have any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we grant the transfer of the Class BV intoxicated beverage license to Maria Elterra, East Bay Enterprises LLC, which will be named as Guillory's Tap House, under all the recommendations, approved with conditions, and all our state ordinances and laws.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Why don't we do this since we're on this topic? If we could get a motion to move forward, let's see, it would be D1.
It's actually 2 and 3.
D2 and D3, is that what you said?
Yeah, you took care of, you took care of D1.
So let's get a motion if we would to move forward, D2 and D3.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the item D2, and that is from petitioner Maria Elterra, doing business as Guillory's Tap House, 198 Thames Street, requests council consideration for a biddling license. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, Chief of Police, and Department of Water Pollution Control.
Motion to approve the biddling license pending safety code inspection?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and the next one, also from the same petitioner, requests council consideration for dancing and entertainment license. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator and Fire Chief, and also the Town Administrator and the Chief of Police. And I did happen to notice the gentleman's comment, the council will be reminded that these licenses are not good on Sundays.
And that was my question because we did have a lengthy discussion with Mr. Ferreira back when he was in front of us for the Sunday entertainment, such as late afternoon. So that's why I was going to refer to you, Mr. Clerk, on if this...
Yeah, that would be a special request.
Okay. So as it stands with, we just want the applicant to know that it will not include Sundays unless you come in front of us for a special, you know, permission with the conditions. So with that, with the same hours and days, I make a motion to grant the dancing and entertainment license with all the recommendations of the departments.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I don't have, Lou, did you have?
You had some question about limitation.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily suggesting limitation because the Thursday nights are usually probably the best for business, but the worst for the neighbors. But I do worry a great deal, I'm like the bad guy when it comes to the liquor licenses and the dancing and entertainment licenses. I just, you know, really hope that this is really kept to like more high-end activity and not some of the stuff that we've endured in the past. I have no doubt that our police department will be down there on people all the time, but just, it is just of concern when you have the various bars in that area and tons and tons of people on the weeknights, particularly on Thursdays, with the students are back in town. It can be very disruptive and it can get out of hand pretty quickly. So I just want to make that point. And, you know, I have confidence in our police department because they're always on top of this stuff, but I just wanted to make that point. I would be remiss if I didn't.
No, but you made me, you reminded me of something, and I don't know if this is my place, Mr. Solicitor, to bring this forth, but our next council meeting is July 5th. And in the past, this council has experienced special meetings for request because of an oversight. And if we're going to make the motion to the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of dancing and entertainment with this new business, Tuesday falls on 4th of July, and I'm just curious, most of our establishments already have licenses. It's already known they will have their dance and entertainment. And this business, I think, being after this meeting, I would assume if we didn't grant that, they would not have dance and entertainment during the 4th of July.
But I didn't propose a limitation on it. I didn't, they're asking for...
Monday through Sunday.
Monday through Sunday.
Oh, okay. I know there was a discussion of the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so, okay.
Yeah, only if you decide to limit it.
As long as we have that clarity, I was just...
Now, should we limit any of this, which we didn't do earlier, to, usually there's like a six-month review for a new establishment? Yeah. Could we add that?
You can do that for the entertainment license, yes.
Okay. So I would like to do that for that.
So if you are willing...
I will amend the motion. Did you say six months or 90 days?
We can do 90 days.
So I'll amend my motion to have a review on probation of 90 days. Was there something else I was missing? Mr. Clerk?
Which is typical of what we do for almost every establishment.
Yeah, okay.
As long as there's no business interruption, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, and the amendment was the 90-day review on it. And I will also make a comment. A lot of the neighbors reached out to me and were concerned. It's been quiet because it's been closed, obviously, and no reflection on the new management. But there were concerns there in the past, as already been mentioned by Councilwoman Perella. This is an opportunity that the neighbors and the new owners or new managers can work together a little bit closer, keep it as quiet as possible. Obviously, everybody knows where they live. They understand what they're working with there. But that respect starting off would be most appreciated by everyone.
Mr. Chairman, before the vote, can I have just a point of clarification?
Certainly.
Has the proposed licensee indicated when they plan to open?
No, they haven't. The clerk just asked when you were planning on opening.
We're trying to open in two weeks.
And I would suggest that this license be granted for both the current year, okay, and then also for the, along with the renewals, because the license that would be granted today expires on July 1st, okay? And because there weren't a previous licensee, they're not on for renewal. So the license should be, it should be understood that that's prospective, okay, for both this year and next. And we'll make that clear in the motion.
I will amend my motion once again per the town clerk, so moved.
So if you didn't get that, okay, everybody got that?
Yeah.
Last year and this year, we don't want any break in interruption in your...
Another special meeting, just for a couple of days.
There you go. All right, so there's a motion and a second. Everybody clear on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to bring...
I'm going to go right into that one.
The next is ordinance, rather, Item C1, Ordinance 2017-06. This is the second reading for adoption in amendment to the town code to include definition of resident, non-resident, and commercial, and also a nonprofit sailing school in the section under boats, docks, and waterways.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And Item C2, this is the first reading of this ordinance, and this would be, this is Ordinance 2017-7. This would be to designate residential parking streets, additional residential parking streets as no parking except with residence sticker. This is the first reading.
Motion, this constitutes the first reading?
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the petition of Judy Fortier for Easter Seals Rhode Island Red, White, and Brew event to be held at the Harrisdorf Marine Museum on Burnside Street on June 17th. You have recommendations from the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police to approve with conditions.
Motion to approve the July, the June 17th event, 7 to 10, for the Easter Seals Rhode Island Red, White, and Brew tasting upon all the recommendations of the departments.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And we also have the petition of DeWolf Tavern, 259 Thames Street, request for one day outdoor expansion of the Class BV limited premises, and also to allow for certain food trucks and entertainment for their fourth annual oyster festival, June 18th. You have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve, and also the Fire Chief to approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve the one-day outdoor expansion of Class BV licensed premises and to allow a food truck and entertainment for the fourth annual oyster festival?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. If you notice, this has nothing so far with the 4th of July celebrations. There's so much going around in town, going on in town. So if you get a moment, support the Easter Seals, support oysters, I guess, and go over to size.
In the March of Dimes.
In the March of Dimes, thank you.
So I think it's great that these two organizations have major fundraising events going on. That's terrific.
And thanks Chef Si, who's here with us tonight.
I didn't see him.
Yeah.
The next is the petition of Wood Street Cafe, 260 and 1/2 Wood Street, requesting a one-day Sunday dancing and entertainment license for July 2nd, 2017. You have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve the one-day Sunday dancing and entertainment license pending noise level?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just a point of clarification, the noise level is...
Sorry, it was part of one of the conditions. It was just saying, depending that they, the condition was they would keep the noise level on a, follow the laws and ordinance.
Okay, so it's per ordinances and recommendations, okay. No exception on that. Okay, no problem. The next is Item E1, and this is the dancing and entertainment license renewals for 2017, 2018. You have the recommendation of the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve.
Motion to approve the 2017-18 dancing and entertainment license renewals.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and you also have the hawkers and peddlers license renewals for 2017, 2018. You have the recommendation of the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You have the public laundry licenses, license renewals for 2017, 2018, and the recommendation of the Town Administrator and the Department of Water Pollution Control to approve.
Move approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And Item E4, you have the petition of Donna Olivo, doing business as All Paws In, 185 Bayview Avenue. This was, the council continued this from its May 17th meeting, and this is the continued review of the dog kennel license.
So this was continued from our last meeting, as a lot of you know. Some signs out there in the back. The reason why this was continued is the past, we were looking to see what opportunities, what this council wanted to do was do some research on what was going on right now and what opportunities there were, if there were any, working with the state. So I'm going to ask again from the solicitor, if you would, to just give clarity to that, please.
So as you're aware from the last meeting, a consent order was entered into between the state and All Paws In. I did have the opportunity to speak with officials who are parties to that agreement, and what I was advised is that unless that agreement is modified at their level, if she were to have more than 10 dogs on the property, she would be considered to be in violation of the agreement and therefore in violation of her probation, and therefore subject to having her license revoked for any number of dogs. What they're really looking for is proof over a period of time that all of the state and local laws and regulations with regard to the caring for dogs are followed. There's been a breach of trust, so to speak. Credibility has to be rebuilt, and the only way that can happen, in their opinion, is for her to operate under the provisions of the agreement which she entered into with legal counsel.
So that means pretty much, well, not even pretty much, if there is nothing but 10. If this council were to say anything except 10...
She would then be in violation. So the steps really are, as I assume, but I had clarify, would be for her to go back and modify that agreement first before coming back to you.
So if the state were to modify that agreement...
You absolutely would be free to reconsider and decide if you wanted to go with more dogs.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions?
I just have, I just have one. Have you talked to increasing the number with Dr. Marshall, other people at the state? And what do you believe, what have they said to you? And the reason I'm asking that is I did not print it out, but we received correspondence from Dr. Marshall, the veterinarian.
Put a copy in front of you.
Oh, yeah, okay. I mean, we have a lot of the materials, but in reading all of it, I was curious about whether or not, I mean, it really sounded like they wanted you to be on this probationary period through 2018 for about a year, and whether or not we were able to make a change in what that meant. And so I was just wondering where you stand in relation to that. So it wasn't talking about just, you know, there were like three different items, that three different attachments that we had. So have you discussed this with them about adding additional dogs and whether they would approve that in this, during this period or not?
They never gave me a stipulation on how many dogs.
Well, I don't know. I read 10.
The agreement does contain a stipulation to 10 dogs. It's pretty straightforward.
Not for the state. The state didn't.
The state incorporated into the agreement that was signed and it was attached, all of the recommended terms and conditions of the license that the town granted, which was for 10.
Mike, I just had a quick question. I went out and I met with Donna, and we walked the grounds of the kennel. And it seemed to me that she had taken all the proper action as far as what she showed me a log. She showed me where kennels were stacked on top of each other and that had been removed. She showed me all the facilities, and it seemed like she had, you know, taken care of all that. So where does this estate see that and how does that factor in that she has, seems like she is in compliance?
So what Donna has to do is she has to go back to the state veterinarian, have the state veterinarian come in and inspect.
He did. He already did.
No, here's very important, two things. One, we council recognize you out there. We can see your signs and we know you're in support, so you don't have to, you don't have to say that. We know you're in support here. Two is that all conversation goes through me. Third one is the solicitor was speaking, and you can certainly, you will be able to respond to it, but I want him to finish his point, please.
No, all I wanted to say, all I was going to say is that I'm not sure what he told Donna. We have a letter on June 6th from the state veterinarian, and they, he is recommending, he basically says, "Any effort to amend or modify the stipulations of the consent agreement is of great concern because it will potentially place the welfare of animals in peril." That's the last sentence, the next to last sentence of the agreement. So to me, it's very simple. I think Donna needs, again, to build up trust and credibility, prove to the state that she can abide by these conditions. I hear Councilman Sweeney went out there, saw how good everything looked. She needs now to bring the state in to also say, wow, things look great. We don't need to keep you on probation for one year. We'll do something less. That's not something you can do, that's something the state has to do.
The state already came in. The state came in in May and saw everything and gave me an okay. I even have it on my phone. She has the paper. I don't know if you want to see it. It's saying that everything was fine. Diane Gabri was there, and she knows this. And I don't understand the whole probation thing because I do have to go to the state and argue a lot of the points because some of those, most of those, close to all of those, were untrue. 51 dogs, no. Unvaccinated, no. All those things were untrue. I ended up with a fine because I didn't tell them that I had put a certain building on the property, had nothing to do with All Paws In, so I didn't feel I needed to tell the state that it was there, you know, which is the problem too with having your business on your personal property. It probably is something I should have never done because now it's kind of like, everybody's trying to incorporate personnel and business all under the same thing. So I wish I had known that you wanted me to go to the state first because I did meet with the town solicitor, and if I had been informed that I should have gone to the state, I would have.
Sure, but I just want to point out, Donna, when you and I met, it was before June 6th. June 6th was yesterday, so the letter from the state came yesterday, so...
I mean, I feel like, I want to support your business. You obviously do a good job with the dogs and so forth, but I feel like we're in the middle of this big thing with the state. I mean, this is a letter that we got yesterday, and there was one other document that came along with it, as well as your consent agreement. And it says that, it is our further understanding is that Ms. Olivo may have mischaracterized a recent administrative action that DEM instituted against her and All Paws In, in hope that this correspondence and the attached public record of the proceedings will serve to accurately reflect the department's position. Then it goes on about the number of violations and so forth and so on, and ends, and it talks about, the respondents agree, this is what you, consent agreement, I guess, that commencing on the effective date of the agreement and extending through and including June 30 of 2018, that the respondents shall operate the kennel in the, in the property located consistently with both the provisions and rules governing animal care facilities, so on and so forth. So I feel like we're in a bad position. So I mean, I asked Mike because when I saw this and I read through it, which was just yesterday, as he said, I think we probably got it like yesterday afternoon, it makes me, is your copy back, Lou? Makes me wonder, you know, what can we do? Like, so if we say yes to you and then the state doesn't agree with that, then you could potentially be in serious trouble and lose everything. So I think Mike's point about maybe getting their okay first, and will they go along if we said yes to additional dogs, which you said, I think, at the last meeting that it would be the daycare, the doggy daycare side? Will they go along with that? I mean, I think it's in your best interest to find that out because if they don't, I mean, you could end up losing everything. I think we're trying to make sure you're not in a position that you get into more trouble than, than it's already been, you know, whatever you want to debate with them, that's fine, that's between you and them.
Well, I'm going to lose everything anyway because I can't run a business on 10 dogs. I've been like scrambling these past couple of months doing this, and it's impossible for me to run this business with 10 dogs. It's absolutely impossible. So I'm, I mean, the state never gave me a 10... So, I'm, I mean, the state never gave me a 10-dog minimum, so I didn't think I had to go to the state. If I thought I had to go to the state, I would have done that first. I figured, do this first and then go to the state and argue that. And yes, I did sign it, but I also signed it because I had no choice. If I didn't sign it, I would have had no license, and I wouldn't have even had the 10 dogs. So I didn't have a choice.
Well, Mike.
I think what she can do is she can say, truthfully, that this council would certainly reconsider the number of dogs, as long as it's not going to violate this agreement or as long as there's some flexibility. We don't have that, we tried to get that in this letter, and we didn't get that.
Could we do it pending their approval?
No, I would not do that.
That was my question.
No, I would absolutely, because with these, with the record you have in front of you now, I think that would hurt her chances if the council acted first. After, this is, this is what was signed on May 15th. This hasn't even been 30 days yet. And so for the council to start giving out conditional approvals on changing an agreement that's supposed to run for a year, but it's only run for 20 days, I think would not bode well for her when she goes to the state to try. I think she can tell the state that she's been here twice, what the concerns of the council are, and I'm more than happy to talk to her attorney about it also. But I would not consider a conditional approval being something that would be helpful.
So what I'm understanding is that she... So what I'm understanding, the process for her to resolve this, is that we either continue this out, and then she goes back to the state with all the alleged violations that are marked on this piece of paper, and if she can get a written statement saying she has adequately, you know, resolved these situations, then she can come back to us, or just trying to get through.
A little bit more than that. Not only resolved, but it has to be resolved and the agreement amended, because as of when you visited, and perhaps as of today, everything that she's supposed to do according to the agreement, I don't think anyone's doubting that, that she's doing everything correctly. You saw it with your own eyes. We're back into what I said earlier with the conversation I had about rebuilding credibility and trust, which can't happen in 20 days, in their opinion, which is why they made it one year. Now, that's not to say that they won't reduce it, but the process has to be, again, they're first and you second.
And I understand that, in your eyes, this has only been going on for a couple of months, but this has been going on for almost eight months. When they came November 4th, when they came back on November 18th, everything was copastatic, was rectified. Also, Diane Gabri came back again on February 3rd, and everything was great. Those were her words, that everything was great. So, I haven't been just being a good girl for a few weeks. This has been months and months and months, and this has just been so dragged out that I got to be honest, I'm emotionally done, you know? This has started out as a personal vendetta, I know it is, and I know she'll make faces, but I know this is a personal vendetta, and we're indulging her in it. And it's just exhausting. It's exhausting, you know? I mean, this is a doggy daycare, you know? And we're making it as like it's some, I don't know, I don't know. I have no other words. I just don't.
Well, all I was going to say is, given what my colleagues had suggested and the solicitor, Ms. Olivoe, I don't question your credibility. You've been a good business owner for years on Bayview. Obviously, this presented itself. But have you had that conversation with your attorney, after the conversations with this council, the conversations that are going to be taking here, place tonight, the public support, any findings to expedite? I think if the dialogue, because you have to understand that, in lieu of proceeding to a hearing, you're well-known that the agreement took that place for a state hearing, and that's why, I just want the public to, it's been reiterated by Councilwoman Perella. So say we give Ms. Olivoe the dogs and give the maximum she wants. The state already said they're going to be doing periodical visits, and when they do, by this agreement, they're going to revoke her license. Doesn't matter what this council did, okay? And like, she's even well-aware of that, and I don't want to, you know, bring that up, but we're trying to salvage your business, and we're trying to accommodate you, and I know for one, as a council, I know it's a busy time of the year, our next meeting's July 5th, but you say when we need a special meeting after conversations of people at the table with the state and yourself and the lawyers involved, if we could expedite this, I will, I will be here, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So what's this council's pleasure?
My suggestion would be, number one, I did talk to her lawyer today to let her know about this evening and the letters that came in, so that he's aware, even though he wasn't planning to be here tonight anyhow. I can speak to him tomorrow and have the conversation with him that we've had here in terms of getting this modified. I would suggest that what you do is table the matter until such time as we receive word that there has been a change. And then when that happens, it can either go on a regular meeting, or if you want to hold a special meeting, you certainly could, but that's what my recommendation would be for this evening.
Okay.
I just had a quick question, I'm sorry. My question was, if you say we, before the July 5th meeting, had approval from the state for the higher limit of animals, and we wanted to have an expedited meeting, I'm not sure how we'd go about contacting the council for that.
Contact the clerk.
Contact the clerk.
And then just email or phone, and then let them know that we'd like the meeting? Okay.
Because we need what?
48 hours, and we'll be here.
In a quorum.
Not at midnight, though.
I mean, we are really, we are really trying to, like, help you. I mean, we are in a, whatever you believe is the origins of this, the fact that it got up to DEM, and we're in the middle of this with legal information coming from them, like, from Dr. Marshall, to clarify what is going on. I mean, he sent that and the list of proceedings to us directly, in addition to what we've had on our agenda. It puts us in a very difficult situation, and it puts you in a worse situation, because now we're aware that we shouldn't be doing that. Do you know what I mean? And so, they've gone out of their way to make sure we understand, like, what your situation is. And so I think for your best interest, it's better to do what we're, what our solicitor's proposing, and that's just go get the information, get them to agree to additional dogs, let them know that we're open to it, we're more than open to it, and that we're willing to even have a special meeting if we have to. And that would be the safest route for you and your business.
So I'll make a motion to table this until we hear...
Can we ask the question, just one question?
I'll let the motion, we can have discussion.
Go ahead. Until we hear from Donna, that she would like this put on the agenda.
We would need something in writing from them.
And I'll explain that to her attorney. I will call her attorney tomorrow.
I will second, and with discussion, Mike, to expedite this as soon as possible, and just to make it well-known that whatever has to be clarified, and all the people involved all at once to get the special meeting, maybe before July 5th, would be in best interest for the business owner.
I just had a quick question. The letter that you read, did it say that the state vet was recommending, or did he say, because I thought you said he was recommending a one-year trial period, or?
No, that's stipulated as a condition. It's not just a recommendation, it's a condition.
Because I thought it was something, and I don't know whether it was something that Mary had read.
I read it right off of there.
The parties further agree that the respondents fail to comply with the terms and condition.
No, 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 I understand.
It's on the second page, Mike, I can, I can find what she's talking about. I just don't have a copy of that here.
I just thought it said something about a recommend...
I'm reading paragraph 12.
We're recommending that you do not.
What Karen's talking about right now is the letter that we got dated June 6th, and at the end, but this doesn't, obviously, it doesn't supersede the agreement that was signed, and the agreement does say that the requirement is a one-year probation.
He's clarifying, he's clarifying in that letter what is in the agreement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Christopich, and I'm a taxpayer of the town. My dog has been a customer of All Paws In for eight and a half years, as one of Donna's first employees. Donna does not advertise. Almost everybody here is through word of mouth. Why is that? Because our dogs are important to us. And the fact that this has gone on for as long as it has seems impossible to most of us, because we would not have our dogs in a place that we felt was unsafe. And, you know, I work in mental health. I see unsafe on a regular basis. This is not unsafe. This is a well-cared-for, well-run, clean, loving environment. And I understand that there are stipulations that have been signed, and this, and that, and the other thing, but I also feel like there have been a lot of roadblocks put up intentionally by some people, and I just really am hoping that this is able to be taken care of quickly, because I really don't want to see Donna close. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sandra Landay. There appears to me to be two operatives. One is the understanding, compassion, and goodwill of our town council members. The other is a contradiction between the second or third sentence from the very end of the state veterinarian's letter, which said, this was just a half hour ago, which said, "We must keep all these license details for the benefit of the dogs and their well-being," in some form, it said that. I think the contradiction lies in, I remember the last meeting we had here, or the second to the last meeting, when it was said that there were no complaints about the treatment of the dogs to the police department for 10 years. Now, if the vet is asked, the state vet is asking for license stipulations that the well-being of the dogs be considered at all times, the fact that there have been no complaints about the operation of this kennel for 10 years seems to me quite a contradiction here. They have complied, whether it's on paper or in reality, the kennel has complied. And I just remember an aria in one of Giancarlo Manati's operas, and the line is, "Papers, papers, what are all these papers for?" In which the papers superseded the reality of the situation. I know we have to comply, but surely your humanity can prevail.
I have a question. So if I were to have Scott Marshall say, "Not a problem with upping the dogs," then you would?
Then we can consider that at that point. At this point, we cannot.
So we're still considering. We would still be considering. Not saying yes, we'd still be considering.
We can't say yes, because our attorney has said we can't really say yes, but of all likelihood that if they approve it, he would have to send something in writing to us that, you know, whatever his recommendation would be, if it's like 15 dogs, or five more dogs, or 10, whatever, I think that there's a more than better shot. If I was a betting person, I'd say that you would get what you're looking for.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying for myself, but I think that's what we have tried to say over the last several meetings, and I know this has been going on for you for a very long time, but for us, it's only been a couple of meetings, and, you know, we've got the state saying one thing, and we are kind of like up against it with the state making it clear to us as a governing body.
My name is Karen Cummings. I'm a Bristol town resident. If I could have 30 seconds of your time, I would like to tell you a quick story. My dog also is a customer of All Paws In. I know what it is to lose a dog to tragedy for kennels that are not properly run. Unfortunately, my first dog was one of the dogs that was killed in the Portsmouth Kennel accident. So I know what it is. It was the only time I had ever left him with someone besides my family. Donna came known to me through word of mouth, like Kathy said, through good friends. I just want you to know that I trust her immensely and have no concern whatsoever about the care she gives for her dogs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just give one other further answer to Donna about the last question? I would say this, that we wouldn't normally say, especially between now and 4th of July, that we would be willing to hold a special meeting if you got the information, unless we were inclined to want to help. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to table this matter until new information is brought to us. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I just, I just want to say thank you for your support. Thank you.
The next item, as chairman and members of the town council, is the petition of Janice Antonucci for the Bristol Art Museum, request council consideration for the use of the public sidewalk on Hope Street for the annual Art El Fresco Show to be held on July 30th with a rein date of August 6th. You have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator, Code Compliance Coordinator, Chief of Police, and Director of Public Works, all to approve with certain conditions.
Move that we approve with the conditions listed.
Second, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the petition of Michael T. Burns for Explore Bristol, and Michael Gaetano for the event coordinator for British Motor Car Festival, request for permission to sell or serve alcoholic beverages at Cold State Park for fundraising event, June 9th and 10th, 2017. The previous approval was only for June 10th. You have a recommendation provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police to approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve pending the tent complies with the fire safety code.
Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. I just really have concern, I just don't like having alcohol being served this close to the beach.
This one is for Independence Park, am I correct?
No, this isn't, this is for the beach.
Cold State Park, I'll take.
Cold State Park.
Okay. The Saturday, all right. Okay.
I know it's fenced in and all, I just don't like that. I don't know if we did that, or we must have done the other one for the park.
Okay, the next is the petition of Joseph George, 27 Surf Drive, request council consideration to license, for license to maintain town property. This is to call for a public hearing to be held on July 5th.
Motion to call a public hearing for July 5th for the request license to maintain town property at 27 Surf Drive.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is item G1, and this is G1A. You have the Bristol, I'm sorry, the Public Service Appointment Section, you have the Bristol County Water Authority, this would be to fill an unexpired term, to expire in February 2020. You have the request of Juan Mariscal, 1303 Hope Street, who's interested in being appointed.
Motion to refer this item to the town clerk to set up an interview.
I believe we interviewed him before, haven't we, for this?
Have we?
I thought we...
It was before our time.
I think you did, but not only one of you did.
It was...
It was a while ago.
Not everyone, yeah. I think it was before there was, oh, before yours, okay. Because I think it was, he was at Lake, applied, but there was an incumbent that we appointed.
Yeah, that was...
Okay. Because he's such a great background for this, so, maybe we could expedite that as soon as we can.
So there was a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was seeing like just yesterday.
The next, this was continued from April 5th. This was, had to do with the petition from Al Videro and others for Our Lady Mount Carmel School, 127 State Street, request council consideration to install flashing school zone sign on High Street and State Street.
Chief, I know that some research was done by you and your department, could you, I know that we have that, but if we could have that, so the public knows too?
As you had requested, we did a study of the immediate area, from Franklin, correction, from High at State to Wood at State, and both north and south on High Street to the intersection of Church down to Braford. intersection of Church down to Brafford. As we always do, we used our message board, which calculates average speed of vehicles traveling at all times of the day when the trailer is situated there. The average speed there was 19.5 miles in a 25 mile an hour posted zone. And that was mostly done right on State Street in the area of the town common, just approximately 50 to 100 feet from the school property. Also measured from the intersections of High at State Street to the front door of the school, and it's approximately 47 feet, 4 inches. And the reason why I point that out is if someone's at a complete stop, which they should be, we also have monitored that for anyone running the stop signs. It's pretty difficult to pick up speed in 47 feet unless you have a race car or some type of vehicle where you can go from 0 to 50 or 100 within seconds. In the opposite direction, it's approximately 248 feet and 5 inches, and that's from Wood at State to the front door of the school. Obviously, there's more of a distance for someone to pick up speed, especially if they had a larger vehicle. Again, that area is of concern. I mean, there's a school there, there's a church, there's a school administration building, there's a town common. There's quite a bit of activity that goes on every day during the weekend. You know, obviously, the school's not there, but we have the church and the town common. Evaluating all that, I have some recommendations I'd like to make. And that would be that there's no doubt that we should reduce that speed on that road from 25 to 20, do some good signage, and put some signage on State Street in both the east and west direction between Wood and High. And also, I would go as far as putting school zone on High Street between Brafford and State Street, and also from Church Street to State Street. I think with some good signage, reducing the speed there, and I, you know, I invite anyone to speak, but as you know, that's my policy, that there is a police car assigned to that school at the time of arrival for the students and faculty, and at departure time, unless they're assigned to a priority call, which is an accident or whatever may take place. It's high visibility. We're traveling up and down that road. I think I went down that road about 10 times myself today, come on the meetings, going downtown. So there's a concern because there's a school there, no doubt about it. And anytime we have any youth that's going to be crossing or whatever, it becomes a concern to us. That's my recommendation as a starting point. We definitely put some signage there, pass an ordinance, put some, you know, reduce the speed there, and continue doing what we're doing with some heavy police presence. And I assure you that I will make sure that anytime we can have the message board out there to do some educating on the outside of the school, not the students, to the drivers. And if that education doesn't work, I will instruct the officers that they will be enforcing that. The other thing I will tell you is that being State Street, I would tend to believe that majority, I'm not going to say all the vehicles, but the majority of the cars traveling in that area of that block are people from this community. I think if you took a survey out of 10 vehicles, I would tend to believe that seven or eight of them are from people in this area. So they know there's a school and everything else. Not saying that they all comply, I'm going to be totally honest with you. But it's not like Hope Street that people are traveling through because it's a through way to get over the bridge to the island, or vice versa, heading down 114 to go to Warren or Barrington. So that's, those are my findings. I definitely don't see it being a major problem, but it is a concern. And I plan to address it exactly how I indicated it to you.
Okay.
Okay? With some good signage, and I will, that's probably the only thing I hadn't forward to you, was some signage that we had templates made, school zone, 20 mile an hour. And with the administrator's authority through the council, we'll recommend that we purchase those signs in the very near future. I know the school year is coming to an end.
Then be ready for the next one.
My goal would be that, you know, come August or September, they're in place. Let us get by the 4th of July, and we'll have it there. And again, I'm always concerned that if there is an issue that needs to be addressed to the police, take another plate down if it's somebody that we don't think is very compliant, and we don't want you addressing it. Call us, we'll be more than glad to visit that person and have a little conversation with him or her. You know, that's not a problem. Okay?
Thank you, Chief. So decreasing that speed with an ordinance change, better signage in the area, and you said the average speed was about 19.5? Okay. Mr. Viedro, I know that you were here. Did you want to share anything with us this evening?
Yes, I do. Who did you, one of the police officers, one of the police officers brought me down to State and High Street, and we went over the situation. Very excellent that the police did cover this data, the, about the speed being enforced. My primary concern is these are three- and four-year-olds and five-year-olds that cross High Street on a regular basis. And also, the student body crosses State Street on a regular basis. I'm not talking about in the morning or in the evening when school is, opens and school closes. I'm talking about activities that are done at the school. The, to put this in sort of respective with Colt Andrews, they shut the street down. Brafford Street, you can't, you can't drive over the street at all because they go back and forth between Colt and Andrews on a regular basis and no traffic at all. My feeling with the flashing lights is that every day across America, when school, people see a bus and they use their yellow lights to red lights, everybody stops, and they know that there's activity taking place. The only thing the flashing lights would do is the same thing, noticing that there is children in the area. And that's primarily what we're after, is that safety feature of identifying to the public that the activity is being taken place by a working sign v. a static sign. That's what I like to recommend to the board. I am concerned about the children crossing the street on a regular basis. We, it's not just in the mornings, it's not just in the evenings. It's done all day long, going to the convent, going to the playground at the convent, and going to the town common. So I, that's what, where I'm pushing for the flashing signs. I appreciate the fact that you're talking about putting signs up. That is excellent, and I'm glad that that's a recommendation by the police department to let the public know that we do have children in the area and there's activity. So that's my recommendation, and I hope you would consider that for Our Lady Mount Carmel School, because majority of the kids in that school, there's 150 kids, and we're pushing it to go up beyond that this coming September. Majority of those kids are from Bristol. So that's basically what I'm pushing and trying to convince the town to look at. I know you have a problem with taxpayers, and I don't know, I believe the flashing signs are four grand apiece. Anyone can confirm or deny that, but that's what was in the East Bay paper. So I can see that be a problem. I don't know if the state can contribute to that or not, but that's what I would like to see. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brian Clark. I have two children at Mount Carmel. Chief, no one wants to see a child get hurt. I can, I think we all can agree with that. The problem with, is, you know, the mornings are great, the police are always there. The afternoons, it's kind of just been new that we've had police there, and they have been for the past two or three months. They've been there every afternoon, and it's been great. It's not the eastbound problem on State Street, it's the westbound. They come past Compagnas, and they're moving. And then there's a crosswalk, and then there's a stop sign. If they're looking at the stop sign, they're not looking at the crosswalk. And that's where we have a lot of issues with the gym teacher, that's one teacher bringing out all the children at one time. It's not like when I have my children by my hands, you know what I mean? So I think for the cost, I don't see it as a huge stumbling block to just put the flashing signs in for the school. So that's my two cents on it. But I mean, there is speed issues there, and I'm not sure if that 19 miles an hour, Chief, is, when you average it from the stop of the stop sign rolling to that sign from State Street going east, because everybody's kind of slow at that point, and those are lower numbers compared to the?
It would in both directions.
Okay. Okay. It's, for me, it's the westbound traffic on State Street that is a, that's the danger. So, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question on that? I mean, because potentially, you're talking about four flashing lights. The initial request, so you'd have one on each section of State Street, and one in each section of High Street. I mean, I'm not sure that it warrants that many of them. If, are you saying that, are you identifying that that is the major concern, is what you're talking about is the crosswalk?
This is my personal observation. Okay? And, you know, four signs, three signs, you know, two on High Street, maybe one westbound on State Street, you know? I don't know. I'm not going to, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer. I just know what I see every day.
Because I was observing, I was stuck doing a lot of applications for a while. I was looking out my window, which directly looks at the High Street side for many, many days in a row. And I would say that about, as the kids were crossing High Street to go to the convent, I would say that maybe 50% of the time, there was even a car at any one of those four corners. Do you know what I mean? Many times, there was nobody even in the area.
I can count on at least six occasions in this past school year that we've just gone through, that in the morning, that a school bus has been stopped on High Street with its flashers on, that had to lean on their horn to stop a car.
I'm talking about the middle of the day. I'm talking about like when they're going over to play in the play yard, because I just, you know, since this came to our attention, I was just like literally there, tied to my, chained to my computer for weeks on end, and I would just keep a look at that. And so I would just notice on, as the kids would be crossing in the middle of the day, like late, late morning, there was not always people at any of those stop signs. So I was surprised that there weren't, you know?
I mean, I just, you have one on Washington.
Just observing.
You have one on Washington Street.
Right.
You know, that's not 114, you know? There's one put there. All, 85% of the kids at Mount Carmel are Bristol residents, so we all pay taxes. We're just asking for a couple of signs. So that's my take on it. You can do it, you render your decision any way you want. This isn't a direct, I'm not yelling at the police saying, "Oh, you're not doing your job." They do fantastic job. We're just asking for a couple of flashing signs. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Duarte. My son Christopher is a 3rd grader at Mount Carmel School. Wanted to thank the police department first and foremost for conducting the survey, and the town council for taking up this issue. The only question and concern I have with the way the survey was taken is the message board in itself serves as a deterrent for people speeding. So that construe the actual results of the speed limit, okay? Just like a person in uniform would, just like a police cruiser would be, anything in a general vicinity is going to prevent people from speeding in the first place, right? Hence the need for the flashing lights. So my only concern about that, the way that the survey was conducted. I think as a taxpayer of this town, the only thing that we're asking is, again, to do what we're doing for every other public school in the town of Bristol, okay? It's about the safety of our children. Unfortunately, I have experienced firsthand, literally grabbing my son and pulling him back because cars are flying, it's crazy. So I just wanted, you know, make sure you guys are aware that it's, you know, it's an issue. It's been an ongoing issue for at least four years that my son's been attending the school. And, you know, flashing lights might be the answer, but it's sure going to help. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it, regarding the signage, maybe Mr. McBride can comment. Can we do it in two steps? Can we put up a sign that doesn't have lights that can have lights added later? Or is it a different sign that to accomplish, doesn't have lights?
You bring up a good question. The first point I'd like to make, and I've made this in the past before the council, is that one of the problems is these mid-block crosswalks, okay? The gentleman just stated that people are not looking for a crosswalk prior to an intersection. And that's why in most instances, you're going to find crosswalks at intersections, stop-controlled intersections, because the vehicles have to stop, and they're expecting a crosswalk. When you put a mid-block crosswalk in between intersections, the average driver who's not familiar with the area doesn't expect it. So therefore, that leads to the signage question, Councilman, that you just raised. There are advanced warning signage for crosswalks, and there are also required signage at those crosswalks that indicates that it is the actual location of a crosswalk, so that a driver can anticipate that by seeing that. So there's an advance warning of a crosswalk, and then there's a crosswalk sign as well because of those problems that exist with those mid-block crosswalks. I had addressed this issue several years back as a consultant for the town when we were talking about a mid-block crosswalk for the First Baptist Church, and it's the same situation. It just, you create a dangerous problem when you want pedestrians to cross in the middle of a block. Now, we utilize the town common as a playground for the school activities, there's a lot of back and forth. I'm not sure what the right answer is, but to answer your question on the signage, there is signage that goes along with a non-signalized crosswalk. Now, you're talking about advance warning and warning for school zones, which is the issue that's before us tonight, which is a separate issue where you have flashes for both directions to warn motorists of a school zone. Okay? And that's a reduced speed limit within that area, and typically, it's 20 miles an hour. And for some reason, we leave these flashers on all day long. You know, some of these schools, it's the pickup and the drop-off periods that create the problems, but the flashers are left on all day long. In this case, they utilize the crosswalk adjacent to their front door to cross over to the, to the common for the activities for the children. And that's where that crosswalk is located. So you have a couple of issues. I think the chief pointed out some of the speed issues as a result of their study. In almost every signal, every single intersection along High Street in the vicinity of the school is stop-controlled. I don't know of one that's not in that particular area. So that's why, you know, what you're doing here is you're going to add a mid-block crosswalk, you're going to, you're going to create this secondary stop condition in an intermittent process timeframe where the kids are going back and forth. So you're going to, you're going to stop for the crosswalk, you're going to stop for the intersection, you're going to come out of the intersection and accelerate to go forward as if you had an eastbound, and then you may have to stop again to allow the kids to go. That's why there's a problem with these mid-block crosswalks. And I just point that out because that may be part of some of the issues that they see as an operational and decided, operational side of things. And hopefully, Councilman, I've answered your question.
Yeah, maybe.
And seven others. Thank you.
I don't know, to Councilman Tiska, obviously, by state law, and you don't want to take any shortcuts when it comes to the safety of our children, and you mentioned the flashing lights that dictate for certain, you know, school zones. I know down in the Cape, they, they have different signage that does have lights on it. But I know for myself tonight, we definitely have to change the ordinance from 25 to 20. That's first and foremost. Secondly, I would like to see where these lights, have they been identified where they are going to be placed? And all the schematics involved, if we were to approve it, presented that way to us.
Something else to consider too, is that State Street is a state road. It is? It is not?
It's not, no.
I think I might have told you that, so that was my error. I went back and verified it's not a state road.
It, it.
Oh, I guess we don't have to talk about that.
It was misconstrued as a state road because at one time, it was on the Transportation Improvement Program, and the state did some modifications to it, but it is not a state road like Griswold or Gooding Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the confusion is because of maybe the name on the road, State Street, State Road.
No, I can make the distinction.
And personally, I think that's what this council would need to move forward if we're all in agreement of which way we're going to go. But first and foremost, I think the motion has to be to make the ordinance change, and then be presented where these signs or lights are going to be to approve it.
But I think Councilman Tiska asked a great question, which was just, can we go one step if, can we try the signs? And if we try those signs and they're not enough, quote-quote, can a light be added to it without?
then be presented where these signs or lights are going to be to approve it.
But, I think Councilman Tiska asked a great question, which was just, can we go one step, if, can we try the signs? And if we try those signs, and they're not enough, quote-quote, can a light be added to it without removing that sign and replacing it with something else, right?
That was my question, but maybe not with that intent, as far as two steps. I think the second, the second step, I thought, might, that could be considered, would be a step similar to what happens at the Bristol Warren School District, where you have a group of parents, the Bristol Warren Education Foundation, that raises funds to contribute to various projects within this classroom and the school district. And I'm wondering if there could be possibly some partnership in getting this, across this finish line altogether, where the town puts up the signs, and there's some small contribution from the loving parents at the school district to help supplement our funds with some, with some lights.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't want to start picking, but it's $12,000 for lights. If it's $4,000 a piece, we need three, right? Is that what we said?
We need four.
No, it's going to be a lot more than $12,000 for four lights. We stole three, and it was about $22,000. By the time we got done, it was a package deal. I mean, that's a, you know, these are people who are paying taxes and paying for private school, which is less of a burden for the public system. So, I don't know that we need to start selling brownies to get safety signs put in, you know? I'd just like to see them done, that's all. Okay?
Absolutely.
Just like an opportunity to weigh in on this, and I did speak to the Police Chief prior, and I don't believe he objected to the suggestion. The issue in the area is distracted driving. It's not necessarily speed. The average speed is 19, and surely, there are people that may be going 25 or 30, or, you know, maybe even higher. But, it's a distracted, a distracted driving issue with texting or not being aware that there are children, not necessarily in the morning, but in the afternoons, using the Common. I don't think it's unreasonable to put one flashing light westbound in the area of the school administration building. I think it's the least we could do, and the other intersections are controlled by a stop. But, that mid, mid, mid-block crosswalk, that's where the issue is, that I see. And signs are great, but the more signs we have out there, the more immune we become to them. I think one flashing light westbound is a good start, and also reducing the speed limit and ordinance would be, I think, I think it'd be the way to go, and that's...
I'd like to make a motion, as the Town Administrator details there.
So, so we have a, we have a motion and a second? So, I would say that the next appropriate step here is that if this is, and we haven't voted on it yet, we have a lot of things on the table, including better signage over there. Even if it is one light or more, there still needs to be better signage over there. There needs to be an ordinance change, as the Chief said, and Councilman Stewart reiterated, for 20 miles an hour. So, there's a few things that need to happen here. So, I think the next step is, is we have a motion to take a look at this westbound. We would need that. I think it would also be appropriate in that motion to have at our next meeting, a ordinance first reading for 20 miles an hour, and also refer this to the Chief and Administrator to give pricing in regards to signage and lit signs. However, if it's just the one, that was that motion that was made. So, I think that would be an all-encompassing motion, so we do this one step, so. And I should say, we do a lot of things concurrently, but with one step.
I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, and if it's not a problem, part of that motion, Councilman Tiska, that way, we're presented the whole package.
Right.
With alternatives and all at once, with everything presented, the locations and the options.
So, July 5th, is that enough time? No, I'm so sorry. It is not enough time. I apologize.
I was going to ask you just, if you could bear with me.
It's not enough time. I just fixed that.
We're under the gun right now with a lot of events.
A lot of things going on, I understand. So, at our next meeting, July 5th is our next meeting, so the meeting after that, would that be appropriate?
Sure. We're going to, we're going to do our best to get you all the information, the pricing on the signage, because when we did the other one, it was a little over a year.
It was a lot of work, yeah.
Right. But, we're going to, we're going to move it right along, we'll forward it through the Administrator. You'll get that information, and we'll move forward with the signage, because there's no doubt, we need signage. But, as the gentleman in the back said, sometimes with the bus there, and the guy leaning on the horn, and a big yellow bus, they still sometimes, as the Town Administrator said, they're preoccupied, and it doesn't always work, but I'm all for it. I think by putting a light there, you're going to start getting people's attention. We'll start with that one, and then we can shift from there if we have to, okay?
So, Mr. Clerk, did you get those adjustments to that? Mr. Tiska, you're comfortable with those changes?
I am.
Okay.
And the date is July 26th.
July 26th would be that meeting that we would talk about in one moment. Is there anything else on this? Mr. Fiedler?
I've talked to Representative Donovan, Susan Donovan, and she mentioned to me that if there's anything that she could do to help this situation, she would. I was wondering if we could ask her from the Town Council, if she can get state funding to help the, reduce the burden of cost.
I think Councilman Tiska would be comfortable adding that to the motion, too? It's a large motion to get there. Lots of things going on. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the Police Department and the Town Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The, the next item also continued from your May 17th meeting, was the free medical advice clinic for residents, as proposed by Dr. Paul Agatello.
Mr. Sill?
Yes, so, one of the issues that was holding us up regarded the insurance coverage, and I have been speaking with our representatives from the Rhode Island International Trust. I've also spoken to the attorney for Dr. Agatello. As it turns out, anything that happens in a town building in terms of the public using it, going in and out of it, that's automatically covered. The only concern the trust had was with the medical advice that's being given, that is in the area where the trust policy would not cover the town, obviously. It would be an area where Dr. Agatello's professional responsibility insurance would kick in. So, he and his attorney are looking into their policy to obtain a rider that would add the town of Bristol's additional assurance. If they did that, that would satisfy our insurance company. That is in process. What I was going to suggest this evening is to move forward with this contingent upon my okay of the, of the policy.
So, I'll make a motion to grant the free medical advice clinic, and thank Dr. Agatello for doing this for our community, contingent on the indemnification liability agreement on behalf of Dr. Agatello's attorney and our solicitor. And once that is forwarded to this council via consent agenda, we can just move forward and approve this.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I would add that we would invite the doctor back in front of us when things are up and running, to give him an opportunity to share with the, the public what he's offering at no cost, his kindness, and to make sure that the public knows when he's going to be there and what he's going to offer. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, continued from May 17th, also is the commercial trash report, as provided by the Public Works Director.
Kevin?
Good evening. I've had some discussion in the past with several members of the council, Town Administrator, regarding our commercial trash account. Kind of a step back to refresh how we got here, was the no bin, no barrel ordinance that was enacted about 18 months ago. This was an element of it, and quite frankly, it's an item within it. It's Section 24-119. It's the RIRRC commercial account. It was the requirement within the ordinance that required me to establish a commercial trash account with Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation. The intent there was to break out the commercial trash from the residential trash, because every year, we went over the cap. We did that, we did that in February of 17, I'm sorry, 16. That was established, with the ordinance went into effect in 1 January. As part of that contract with Rhode Island Resource Recovery, they stipulate a thousand-ton requirement of commercial trash to be part of that contract. At the time when we established our contract, we were within that 1,000 ton of commercial trash, so that I felt comfortable doing it. And the idea was to separate out commercial trash, and it would be invoiced at a different rate. The residential trash would be invoiced at a lower rate, and we would hopefully not go over the cap. Two things that have occurred thus far, as of this year, the fiscal year, which started last July, we're currently still under our cap, and we're not paying a penalty on the residential side of things. We will just barely go over it this month, in my anticipation, by, you know, a couple hundred ton, maybe. However, we paid for over 650 ton of commercial trash at $57 a ton. We're not going to meet the 1,000 ton requirement per the agreement with Rhode Island Resource And therefore, that leads me to think that we probably can't do this commercial account. Doesn't make sense to do the commercial account any further. And one of the elements within that is, in order for me to do the commercial trash collection, I had to set up a separate day with a separate crew on a separate truck, getting weighed in independently of the residential trash, to track how much volume we were taking in. In addition to that, any commercial business that goes to the transfer station to get rid of trash at the transfer station, or materials, they're weighed in, and it's tracked on the commercial account. And every month, we send a report to Rhode Island Resource Recovery, how much tonnage goes to them. And that's how those numbers occur. That's how we've tracked it. We've got our hands around it, so we know exactly where we are, almost on any given day, up to the minute. So, it, it brings me to the point that I'm not so sure that, and I, actually, I would like to ask the council to take a look at that line item or section within the ordinance, and, and remove that from the so-called no bin, no barrel ordinance. And I know there's a process to that, we'll take a couple of meetings, but my recommendation is, for a couple of reasons, we're well under the commercial volume, and one of the reasons, a separate reason for that is, last year, we restructured our fees, if you remember, on 1 July. And as a result of that, the commercial tonnage going into the transfer station has dropped off significantly. I think it's, you know, the businesses that used the transfer station up to that point, probably afterwards, found that it was just as competitive to get a dumpster and take care of it that way onsite, rather than going to the transfer station. So, the total volume has gone down quite a bit, and that's why we're, we're falling short of the 1,000 tons this year. I anticipate that will continue. However, once we throw the, whatever we're collecting residential, commercial trash back into the residential amount, we will hit that point next year where, where we will go over. Now, keep in mind, this coming July, the tipping fees go up. Residential rate goes from $34 a ton to $39.50, and the commercial rate goes from $57 a ton to $67 a ton. So, I'm trying to be penny wise here, looking at the tipping fees increase, and trying to offset, to the best of our ability, any increases that we'd have to accommodate in next year's budget. And oh, by the way, 1 July of 18, the rates are going to go up again. They're going to go to, I think it's $47 a ton on the residential, and I don't know what, I don't remember what it was on the commercial. So, we're talking about significant increases in disposal fees for the town. Additionally, I did a little rundown. I think the Chairman had asked me a couple of, couple of months ago to take a look at labor-related costs. So, what I did is, I actually ran down, to the best of our ability, and we track work orders or crew assignments on a daily basis. We went back, and we collect commercial trash on a Tuesday. That requires me to have three additional vehicles on the road for a total of five bodies on a Tuesday to collect the commercial, so that we can track everything. That amounts to about $50,000 a year annually in labor costs, something we don't see, because we pay for that. But, those labor costs and labor man-hours could be rededicated to do other things, if we didn't have to do this specific commercial trash collection, and, and separate it out the way the ordinance required me to. So, I asked the council to look at amending the ordinance and eliminating the need for the commercial trash account. I think it makes sense for the town, from a cost analysis standpoint, and also from our labor-related standpoint as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I, I had provided you a report a month or so ago. I, I really didn't want to dig into those fine-tuned numbers. Everything is there, but it, it will show you what I had just summarized. So, the bottom line up front is Section 24-119, the RIRRC, Rhode Island Resource Recovery Commercial Account is the one I'd like to amend and remove that requirement. And I'd also, if I could just throw this out, just for your visibility, there is a sunset clause within that no bin, no barrel, and that is 31 December of this year. Just so it's on your radar screen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
You said that, you thought that maybe people decided to get a dumpster instead. So, if we go back to just picking up the commercial trash with the regular trash, do you think that they would then go back to putting their trash out?
No, I, I think, you know, we collect their trash curbside, and then the thing that's dropped off, that we can see, is commercial businesses that go to the transfer station to get rid of their construction debris or what have you. That's what's dropped off, because I think our rates are competitive with dumpsters, and dumpsters for a project site is just as easy, because you can get rid of it onsite.
Okay.
Which was a byproduct of the fee changes, the restructuring of the fees last year.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Kevin, I'm definitely in agreement with you in regards to striking out the commercial account or the ordinance. I think it makes a lot of sense, especially with the increased tipping fees that are coming down the, the road. If we're the only municipal town in the state of Rhode Island that picks up curbside commercial for businesses, is it, maybe as asked from my colleagues, is, are we, do we still want to do that? Because I'm noticing that we are, you said there was an additional three men, and how much?
Five, five gentlemen. It's an additional recycling truck, it's a commercial cardboard, which is two men on one stakebody vehicle, and it's also two individuals driving a trash truck.
Okay. And it's for 116 and 96 tons? That's it?
Uh, no, the total for the year was 650 roughly. 625 for the year thus far, fiscal year. I, I think, Councilman, the item that you are addressing is, is a little bit separate from what I'm looking at, although it is directly related. That's probably a separate discussion that the council needs to have, but it's directly related to the commercial trash piece, because what's going to happen now is, we're going to, we're going to put that commercial volume back into the residential volume, and next year, it, it will impact where we are going over the, over the top for, when I calculated it out this year, it was about a wash, what we paid in additional fees versus what we would have paid in a fine for a higher rate for residential disposal. So, that was close there. The big factor was the labor costs.
So, Kevin, when you put all of this together in one dumpster, so, what, what is the overage cap? What is the cost when you go over? You just said that it was $39.50 starting July 1st. What does it cost when you are over our allotted tonnage?
Uh, this year, we, we pay $34 per ton for residential disposal, and when we go over, it goes to $57 a ton, I believe, which is the commercial rate. Next year, the residential, as I mentioned earlier, is going to go to $39.50 per ton, and then I believe it will be $67 a ton.
$67, okay.
For that overage. That's kind of the penalty.
So, the, so, from what I'm, and obviously, you and I have talked about this, as you mentioned, I hear, for all of us, some major bonuses by making some adjustments here. One is, $50,000 in labor cost is not only a, that, that money has been spent, but that money, those labor hours are then reallocated for drainage repair, for improvements, and, you know, a myriad of things that need to be done.
Yeah, I don't want to mislead the council by saying it's costing us an additional 50,000. It's within the department. It's a sunk cost within the department for labor.
But, it's being spent for this.
But, it's being allocated for the commercial trash.
Okay.
You know, where we could reallocate those individuals to do other things. And believe me, the Town Administrator has a laundry list that he gives me just about every day, you know, for me to tackle things, which would give us a workforce to start tackling some of those bigger things.
Possibly some school signs, right?
Possibly.
We never know. So, it just, so, so this is kind of a multi-prong. You're suggesting that an ordinance should be on our next agenda for first reading, to remove the commercial account.
Correct. Correct.
Second part is, sounds like a larger discussion about commercial trash pickup.
Right.
Is it still appropriate? And if it isn't, what is the steps to change or stop doing that?
Correct. I didn't want to tie up one on the ordinance piece with the separate discussion which you just mentioned, but they are too related, although two separate timeframe tracks, if you will, but they are definitely related.
All right.
So at the current time, by removing the commercial trash account does not mean that we're stopping commercial curbside pickup?
Absolutely not.
But it is important.
Can't hear you.
But it is important that that conversation does happen expediently as well.
Absolutely.
What would happen is I would probably go back to the way we did the trash collection before and each business located within each area would be picked up on their designated area's day. In other words, I changed the commercial trash to a Tuesday to accommodate us because that was the best day for us to do that. What would happen is depending on where the business was located in town, it would revert back to the original collection day. And oh, by the way, a lot of these businesses, they'll put it out on Tuesday and if the trash gets picked up on Thursday for their area, there's stuff out there too on that day. So what I'd like, it will take me a little bit of time to get them back on track for the original collection day, but then get everybody back on that five-day schedule as opposed to the Tuesday only for business.
Okay. So it sounds like our next step here is to get a motion to amend this agenda, sorry, amend this ordinance to remove the commercial account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any of the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we, at a close future date, we need to have a workshop that would include approximately, how many business owners do we pick up?
I have a list that's close to 200.
Excuse me.
It was in that report that I gave you and it also breaks down in that report how many businesses per week we actually in fact pick up. So that's, you know, we don't pick up a full 200 that we have a list of and some of them put it out some weeks and some of them put them out other week, you know what I mean? It's sporadic. But we do have a list of every single one and I personally sent a letter to each one of those businesses when we started the program.
Okay. Anything else on this item?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is, excuse me, what are we on? H, H4.
H4.
And this is regarding economic development and this was continued from our last meeting or the May 17 meeting and this was brought up by Councilman Tiska. And I believe this had to do with some suggested amendments to the town code specifically relating to the Historic District Commission.
And I believe we asked the solicitor to look into this?
I did and the way the Historic District Commission works is that it's all based on state law.
Would you please remind everyone what we had you look into and what you found out?
Sure.
Because I don't, I know, but I just want to make sure we're all clear.
Sure. What we were looking into were a couple items. One was reducing the time period from 90 to 45 days on issues which the HTC couldn't decide in 45 days and we wanted to eliminate that extra 45-day piece. And the language in our ordinance actually mirrors word for word what's in the state law because it has to in order to qualify as Historic District Commission. We're also looking at whether or not we could have three members of the board make decisions, especially with regard to site visits and a quorum is four, so we cannot go below that. So those two items that I looked into specifically, we weren't able to get accomplished. It doesn't mean some of the other things on, there's a long list here of items and we can certainly move forward on some of these others that are not conditioned on state law.
Sure. So I think we should consider that maybe an exercise and use that as discussions for the next steps on how we can receive recommendations, suggestions from our Economic Development Commission, review them, prioritize them, research them and decide on whether we take action or not. It's not clear to me on the best way to do that and I think it's, would be important to figure out how we can take not just the recommendations that are in front of us currently, but our commission is going to continue to work through our town code and I think getting their perspective on what some changes may be necessary to change the economic culture and environment here is important. Clearly, this is inefficient by picking out a few, you looking at a couple, Mr. Solicitor, coming back to us and saying, okay, those, clearly it's not within our scope and ability to make those changes. But I think if we can come up with a process, and I don't know if it's a workshop, I don't know if it's a small committee or whether the Economic Development Commission first, after reaching out to the heads of each board and commissions to get their feedback, calls through that, then sends it to the solicitor, you look at it and then you provide some, at least context on what the implications are for those recommendations. If that list then comes to the council and we can act accordingly, maybe that's the process. But I think it's important that we come up with a process so our commission can get their recommendations to this council so that we can act within the shortest period of time possible on some of these items.
I think one of the critical things you said is that depending on which area of the ordinances they would like amended, we should definitely run them first by the organization or group or body that's going to be affected, just so that they have a stake in it and have some feedback. And then from there, my office can vet the legal end of it.
Okay. So back to the original list that was submitted that those two pieces came from, would it be possible for you to do just that and to provide some legal context on what we are able to do legally according to whether it's state law or ordinances so that we can look at the policy side of it and decide on whether it is something that is good or not so good for the town of Bristol?
I think it would make, what I'd like to see is first to share this list with the various constituencies.
I believe that's been done. I believe the Economic Development Commission has provided an opportunity and received input from various department heads, taken that input into account, revised their list and came up with what you see there. Sometimes they didn't necessarily take their input the way they may have wanted them to, but they did give them the opportunity to provide input.
So this list as of May 11th has been circulated to everyone that's?
That's my understanding and I believe, including our Community Development Department, has provided some input to them as well.
I would say for myself, I would, that it's appropriate that we have a workshop on this, but I would also say it's appropriate to get a written recommendation from each board that this affects and use that as a, as kind of a point of reference, obviously. And I do believe that the solicitor needs to weigh in on anything that is a suggested ordinance change or that ordinance-esque change before we would have a workshop on that. So I would, to me, it would seem like if it's gone in front of them, then have each one of the boards, any board or commission that was affected, have them respond in writing and give us a recommendation and then we can have a workshop with, with the Economic Development Commission and this council and before that workshop, the solicitor could weigh in on what can and cannot be changed.
Absolutely.
And that way, when we sit and we talk, we can, we know we have our recommendations from the boards. We know if we want to take the next step on something, we can legally take that next step on something. So it would seem like we have all our ducks in a row to make a decision. What's your thoughts?
Yeah, I think so. Again, using this as a model because I would hope that we continue to get recommendations from our Economic Development Commission on how we can do better. This list probably should be distributed to those department heads, those commission heads from the Economic Development Commission who will collect those letters and submit those to the solicitor for then review and then discussion with the council in a workshop environment, it seems.
So you're saying refer it back to them?
I think it should be referred back to the Economic Development Commission to resubmit to the solicitor with.
With our request for recommendations on those items of change.
Which will eventually go through Diane and Jessica anyways because with the board under, you attend those meetings.
Well, that's another question. What is the engagement of Jessica or I guess you as a department head for community development with the Economic Development Commission?
So Jessica staffs them now and I used to go more frequently, but she's really taken the lead on that. Submit their recommended ordinance amendments to Jessica to forward to the department heads. I think as was stated earlier, I don't know if the Economic Development Commission accepted the recommendations from each of the departments. I think they felt that they were asked by the council to look at this, so they wanted to report back directly to you with their recommendations. And so that's where you are now with this.
Yeah, and I'm worried that it's going to, we're going to go in a circle and come up with a track.
Well, I think, you know, when I looked at the list and I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me tonight, but I think if I recall, most if not all of the other recommendations were town council, board jurisdiction.
Oh, licenses, like for amusements.
It was amusements.
Adult entertainment, liquor licenses, tattoos, all of that licenses for the.
Right. I believe the Historic District Commission may have been, that was the only one that I recall that was with a separate board other than the town council. And I know there was some, you know, emails back and forth with the department heads from, I think Historic District Staff weighed in on some of it and I think the Tax Assessor weighed in on some of it. And I don't know if, I don't know if the recommendations that the other departments weighed in on actually made it to the list that the EDC provided to you. I think some things may have fallen off or some things, again, they felt that they were reporting to you, so they wanted it to be from them to you unfiltered. So that's where we are. And so I think that the discussion that you're having about sending it back to the boards and the department heads, I think if I recall correctly, it was mostly things under your jurisdiction. So if you want to go forward with them, then, you know, we can talk about it at a workshop after the solicitor reviews it.
So you're suggesting the step of boards and commissions is unneeded?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, Mike has the list. If there's anything that jumps out at you.
Well, that's fine. Then I'll tell you what, to expedite this, then the next step for us is to, is that Mike and Diane speak about this, go through the list and then we'll set up a workshop with the EDC.
Sounds like a good point.
Okay. That's our next step.
I think that's great.
I think it's important that we decide, to not decide or decide to decide. And I think this is an important step in deciding.
Or not to.
No, we're going to decide.
You set it up. I hit it out of the park. All right, so Andy, it would seem appropriate that you make a motion to, that we have a workshop on this, then you refer to the admin, sorry, the solicitor and Diane to review.
I make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I think it's under this agenda item, Diane, that you submitted some information regarding to inquiry about sea level rise. Is that under this? That is another item.
Another item.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The next item, also from Councilman Tiska and also continued from May 17th, is updating of the website.
So I'm just looking for some information as also, also I think would like to make some suggestions regarding the information provided on the town website in respect to, also compared to the information provided on the Explore Bristol website on how there in some cases is a duplication of efforts. And I'm wondering if a new look is needed to be taken at strategically how we use the townofbristol.us website for agendas and government notifications and services we provide and then some of the other more visitors, tours and related items we partner with as we providing significant funding to our tours and partnership to focus on doing that and not try to duplicate it, you know, when we, if you don't duplicate it exactly, then there's, I think, well, there's the extra effort, but also the chance for mistakes. So I'm wondering if there needs to be a new look at maybe Explore Bristol's website, which I know they're looking hard at monetizing being underneath the Bristol website, a link directly to, removing some of the information on the Bristol website. So I'm wondering where that happens, who that, and where that discussion could take place to.
Are you saying to merge the two websites?
Well, I just think that.
Generally, you're saying to keep them separate because I'm thinking we're a government entity website. You need to make sure we're day-to-day government stuff and then your tourism. So I don't know if you could run a link?
I think you give it of all the tourism stuff on the Bristol website and invest into Explore Bristol's website and link it right to it. But I, there's someone more, I think, intelligent related to how people seek out that information and how we should be presenting that information. I just think, looking at it, that we can do it better and more accurately and with less effort and hopefully less cost. And I'm wondering if that falls within administration, whether it's in community development, whether it's where that's at and if there are any plans to update and reformat our website.
So I'm sorry, I'm not sure what we're looking, I'm not sure what we're looking to do, I'm sorry. I heard, obviously you.
I'm looking, I guess I'm looking for first a discussion and then hopefully action, but I'd like to understand better where the Bristol, Rhode Island website is managed within our community.
I think we went over this back in December or January. What we did is we had a meeting over the winter and our Economic Development Coordinator, Jessica Ploma, she is the website manager and she has a point person, a point of contact at each department. She oversees it. If there's any major issues, the point person from each department is supposed to address it with Jessica. But I clearly understand your point. I think it might not be a bad idea to have a link to Explore Bristol for all social events in town so that we're not mixing government with.
Well, there is a link and I think that's being done well, but the town of Bristol also has their own what's going on in Bristol as well as Explore Bristol has what's going on in Bristol. So I think there's some duplication there. I think at this point, that's helpful and the next step, what I'd like to do is take the initiative to maybe sit down with Jessica and understand better the progress she's made so far and if she has some updates planned to see if there's a way that we can work together on that.
If I may, Councilman, to your credit with this agenda item, and it's good having conversations with Diane and Jessica, it's something you touched upon last meeting, which is crucial to the website and the future of the town is the, to follow the other municipalities of E permitting. And I'm glad to know that we are in constructive mode that will be executed if we can be informed on how quickly, a timeline and a strategy to convey that to the public, I think is crucial as well.
So Councilman Tiska, how about if we do this, if you're comfortable with it? It sounds like you'd like to have a meeting directly with Jessica Flomar?
I would. That's okay with department head, yep.
Okay. And then how about this, how about if we continue this to our July 5th or would you like more than the?
That's fine.
Does that work?
Mr. Chairman, I will remind you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not that there is an urgency here, but I was sort of instructed to keep July 5th minimal by the council.
I like, we did that, didn't we?
You did that.
I like to be reminded every once in a while of such things.
So I was just, I kind of came into this meeting with the idea that.
It brought to my attention earlier.
I want to leapfrog a little bit.
Good point.
Is it July 26th?
Yes.
Councilman Tiska?
We have a meeting July 5th?
All right. So you are correct. We did ask that and we're expecting to have a good time on the 4th, so the 5th may be a meeting of quietness. Yes, exactly. I joke. So Councilman Tiska, are you comfortable with the 26th? All right. So we have a motion to move, continue this to 26th. Councilman Tiska, come back with some new information. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Is there anybody else in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Yeah, got to move it along here.
The next item is item I1 and. The next item is item I-1, and this is Councilman Stewart requesting information, status of the RFP 850, and that is the onsite solar project. You have a report provided by the Director of Community Development concerning same.
Well, I would be remiss. Chairman Colero and myself reproposed after attempts that in the past with our directors and administration, and it's exciting that this is finally moving forward for the solar program at the landfill. But it not only moved forward, it, it just, yeah, it's just gonna expand with our partnership with Barrington and initiatives all throughout the town, so we're not just gonna be limited to the landfill. And this is more of a public update and timeline that I like to do for the public with our projects. So Diane, if you could just give a small...
Hey, you're doing the update. You didn't know that, did you? No.
So I did give you a memo. We did hire, which I may have reported on previously, we did hire a consultant. If you recall, we had 16 proposals for the solar program, and we were informed by the state that we really needed an expert to help us review those. So we have somebody who has been, who's on board. We are setting up a kickoff meeting for sometime later in the month. We don't have a date yet with that. But that's the next phase, and the consultant has sort of outlined for us the next steps and the, you know, sort of the expectations moving forward, and with a timeline, target timeline, because we haven't gotten into it yet, so we are just kind of modeling that. But yeah, I'm really happy, and a lot of the vendors have been checking in with me, and I've told everybody we're still on track, you know, just stay tuned. So I think we'll be going forward pretty quickly.
And it was talked about a couple of years on this. Do you think it'll be sooner?
No, I think it'll be a couple of years.
I think two years.
Couple of years. Yes, yes.
So just, so a couple more on that. We're partnering with Barrington, and partnering means that we're sharing the cost of this consultant with Barrington.
Yes, thank you.
And if Barrington chooses to do just this or that, or we choose just to do this or that, it's okay. We can take our own directions. If we work together, there are other communities in Rhode Island that have, for example, a windmill in one town, but another town benefits from that. So there are partnerships possible. We're gonna talk about everything and see what's most beneficial for the town. But that is, that's important to bring out. But we are on time. We're generally on time to move forward on this. And that includes, as Councilman Stewart just mentioned, the landfill, solar, and then a lot of public buildings, including maybe some schools, which they were part of that conversation, continue to. This building, Quinta Gamlin, and there's a myriad. So it's good stuff.
It's great.
So, nice.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the public know that we're pursuing on time, and any updates that we can, I know, as we talked about with the state, with another town, that's what's prolonging the procedures, but it's just good that we're doing this renewable project. So make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Also from Councilman Stewart regarding his request for status report on the Byfield School Roof and Repair Project.
So again, this is just an update. I have talked to building inspector, Mr. Pimenter. As you know, a lot of constituents have been asking me. They've been seeing the staging up for quite some time, and they're just curious how long the project's gonna be. And I just figured, you know, I see the sawhorses around, but we're gonna have the carnival. And you get some people that, you know, we were talking about driving up State Street, they're not paying attention, but I just wanna make sure that that perimeter is safe during the 4th of July events. But Richard, if you can just give us an update on where that project is going forward, and maybe a suitable timeline.
Okay. And I did, I did prepare a, just a brief status report on it. Did you receive that? It was kind of late in the day that I got it done. I'm not sure if you received it.
We did not.
Okay. I have some extra copies here if you'd like.
How about if you just, you can share it with us, and we'll take those copies afterwards.
That'd be great.
All right. So we have two contracts with the DJ Cudaro. He's the general contractor on the job. The first contract was bid number 848, was an RFP, and he was the sole bidder and consequently hired for the job. That entire job is 100% complete. And then there was a change order, which this council agreed to.
Yep.
And at this time, there's like three elements to that change order. There was replacement of the mansad roof slate and copper, and that is about 60% complete. There's also, we installed all new windows on the third floor. That's 100% completed. And then there's the, the last portion of that change order was to paint the third floor trim, and that has not been started. That would be the last thing that they would do. Also, looking at the timeline, weather permitting, they expect all work shall be substantially complete by the end of June.
Okay.
The staging is scheduled to be removed by June 30th.
So beautiful.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be close and hope for good weather.
There's a special day that's really close to that that we were hoping, yeah.
So you answered both of my questions, see? And we can convey that.
Tough weather. That must have put them far behind.
Yeah, the weather was not the best this spring, and also one of the subcontract, subcontract injured his knee, and that kind of slowed up the job as well. But it looks like, it looks like they're progressing nicely and will be done before the, that special day we have here.
Aye, thank you very much. And again, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item I-3, and this is from the chairman, and he is requesting the opportunity to schedule a workshop with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation to discuss the corridor study of Hope Street between Chestnut Street and Gooding Avenue. You have various reports provided by the DOT and their consultant.
So if you recall, I brought this up, and we'd all agreed that it was appropriate to request the state, and we, I believe we did it through the chief, correct, that there'd be a traffic study in the area of Gooding Ave with Plaza there, all the way through Chestnut, and actually, and farther than that, near, down a little bit farther on either way. That happened. We have that information, and I thought it was appropriate. We don't need to talk about it tonight, but I thought it was appropriate that the public knew that we did that. We got that information back as requested from DOT, and that we'll set up a workshop that we can speak a little bit more about this. There was a lot of recommendations in there. There's a few that I vehemently disagree with, and there's a lot that I really like. So, but I think we can all talk about that. And what the state is looking for is our consent to move forward on that, on those recommendations that they have. And we can't do that without some big discussion, which should include, but not limited to, the administrator, the chief of police, community development, fire. I mean, there's a lot of people involved in this conversation. We want all that input. So that's why it's on the agenda as a workshop, and I think we're on workshop number five now on this one. So, which should happen after, obviously, the 4th of July. So, okay. So I'm gonna refer this to you, Lou, to set up that workshop. So can I have a motion out of fact?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I just say, I, it's not in, I don't think it's in here, but I must have read it in the paper. I'm not sure where I read it. But it looks like the, is it the ICET? I mean, one of the projects, big projects on 114 for Bristol into Warren, it's got put off to 2022. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I mean, that's very disappointing, because we've been waiting for that for a long, long, long time. Yeah, we've been waiting for that for many years already. And it just seems like some of our other upgrades in Bristol, like a matter of come, so forth, they can go on for like 20 years or whatever. So I was very disappointed to read that. And maybe we can just discuss that with them when they come as well.
Okay. The next item is item I-4, and this is from Councilman Sweeney regarding Keep America Beautiful Grant.
Well, I know you guys are all sick of me talking about recycling. Believe me, I know. But I have to, it's a positive story. Back in March, 22nd, I was alerted to a grant that I sent off to Walter, and Walter applied for it. We all know grants, you either can get or not get. It's a kind of a gamble, right? So he successfully got a grant and came through, and 20 beautiful recycling bins have just arrived. And I know, Councilman Stewart, you're interested in some, and everybody's kind of like interested in, and I thought I'd just highlight Walter, and I want to thank you for writing up that grant and getting it done, and us getting those recycling, because I know some are gonna go to the common as well, correct? So I don't know if you want to say anything, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Would you like to say anything, Walter?
Receive and file. Keep moving.
No, they'll be put out, a bunch of them will be put out on Friday. They're brought to you by Snapple and Make America Beautiful, so.
Not Make America Great Again.
Not, no. And I did say Make America Beautiful Again. Yeah. So it's really nice to have them.
Thank you, Walter. Motion to receive and file?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is from the administrator requesting executive session, which we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. Also, a, also from the administrator regarding a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Bristol and the university, and this is for ratification.
Mr. Administrator.
This is an item we spoke about during one of the Capitol Projects Workshops, and we're just looking for ratification. I can tell you briefly what it is, and if you have any specific questions, Jose is here. But we're gonna be repairing the, dig and replace the sewer main on Ferry Road. There's a bottleneck there, and there's actually, I think at this point, I'll just turn it over to Jose. I'm gonna tell him what the condition of the pipe is for the public's knowledge.
With the plans to build more dorm, add capacity to the sewer main that's there, as you remember, we had issues a few years ago with a collapse. The way the pipe was built, there is a bottleneck, as the administrator says. It actually goes from 12 inches down to 8 inch. It's an age pipe. It just, when they came to us for those added dormitories, we did a study where our capacity, we cannot increase capacity without doing this work. It just, it won't, it won't flow correctly, will not be sustainable to keep it as it is.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I just wanna add that it will benefit the surrounding neighborhoods, Fairview, Ambrose, with the larger capacity pipe. And as the director just stated, we are at capacity now at the 8-inch flatline section. It levels off in the Griswold area. So it'll be an infrastructure improvement that we'll benefit from for years to come. In the agreement with the university, is they're gonna contribute half a million dollars worth interest towards the project. But the project is over 1.9 million. But it is something that needs to be done, regardless of any future development at the university. We still have to have it done.
Is there any further negotiation with the university to get a little bit more?
We negotiated quite a bit. That's the best we could do.
And to be honest, it's very, very good, too. So that was a, that's a nice step forward, and regardless of if the university needed it, and as you both already mentioned, we were gonna be on the hook for that if, at one point in time, because it was a, it's a pretty tough area over there. So this is a, this is a mutual benefit.
I always think it's better to get the project bigger and have it ready. So I mean, I'm very happy to see that this got worked out, have the larger pipe. So, thank you, Steve.
So you need a motion to approve the memorandum?
Ratified.
Yes, we do.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'd use a diaphragm here, people. I can't hear you.
I know.
Okay. The next is your annual resolution regarding the Bristol 4th of July celebration for 2017, essentially proves all of the events that are planned.
Make a motion to approve and accept, adopt. I think I covered it all, Lou, with the resolution.
All of the above.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is from the Director of Community Development regarding Councilman Tiscas' request to have information regarding climate change and sea level rise concerning initiatives in Bristol.
Maybe Diane, you'd like to start off by just comment, I appreciate the report you put together. I think it is, addresses what I was looking for in a few different ways. I think that we are making some efforts. The question is, can we do more? And are we looking for ways to do more relating to additional funding or projects, relating to ways, is there more education outreach that we can do, staff can do, to see where, what other municipalities are doing, to heed some of the warnings that we're hearing?
Sure. So I put together a report, just some of the things that the town's already doing to address this issue. And it's, it's more, I think, geared towards a sustainability approach and a resiliency. I don't think we're gonna be in a position to stop the sea level rise. I think we're just gonna have to continue doing what we're doing so Bristol's less vulnerable and more resilient. And I think specifically on the climate change front, because that's where we're gonna see more rainstorms and, you know, more heavier rain events, which we're already sort of experiencing. So a lot of what we're doing is, in the, in the topic of stormwater, we're also looking at infrastructure projects. I don't know how much in detail you want me to go about any of these, but just so, you know, stormwater is, we've done a lot of good work with the green infrastructure, work at the Town Beach Parking Lot, the Gatoria School. We have a little rain garden project at the Police Department that we're trying to get some funding for. We're looking at the new subdivision and development review regulations, which the planning board just adopted, to require less pavement and more green infrastructure in new developments. The Conservation Commission is working on a program to educate residents and ways that people can do more to, you know, work with nature and help nature work with us to put the water back into the earth. We've got a couple, the infrastructure, I mentioned, the state roads and bridges. We put this on the DOT's list for design work. When they focus on the bridges, that they design any to address sea level rise. Jose's got a grant for retrofitting three pump stations with generators, so that we can be more, again, resilient and respond quicker after a storm event. We're doing, as you said earlier, we're looking at reducing our carbon footprint, reducing the amount of carbon that goes into the environment, because that contributes to the greenhouse gases. And so that's, we're doing a lot of, you know, renewable energy projects. We've done LED conversions with the streetlights. We're doing a lot of programs to create energy efficiency in our municipal buildings. The flood plain, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. We are a community raining system community, so we get discounts on the flood insurance policies for all of the work that we do. We've adopted the, or the town council, rather, has adopted the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which has actions to reduce all the town's risks as a result of storm events. And then some of the future actions that we have in the Comprehensive Plan relative to climate change, they're on the list. I think they're on the list, and if we come up with funding or, you know, a good project that we can dovetail any of these, work any of these into. One of the things that was brought up a lot when we did the Comprehensive Plan was the Historic Preservation Plan and the environment, and the fact that the, you know, the cultural resources are in, are in the low-lying areas. So they talked, the committee working on the plan talked a lot about coming up with a Historic Preservation Plan to specifically address the Historic District and the historic resources. Then we've talked about long-range energy reduction planning, establishing an energy use baseline plan, and then looking forward with electronic, or, excuse me, electric vehicle charging stations. That's something that I would like to do in the zoning ordinance, and we've got some guidance from the state on that. So that one can, we can probably pull that out with our ordinance amendments that we'll be coming to you with. So those are some of the things that are on the list. And again, And again, knowing that we are looking at these as opportunities, come up for funding or, you know, projects that other people are working on, we can sort of partner with, we'll keep, we'll keep doing what we're doing. So.
Thanks, Diane. And I think with that, just I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
The next item from Councilman Stewart regarding trash and recycling receptacles initiative along town roads and bike path intersections.
So I brought this up at my prerogative last meeting, but Mr. Clerk, I'm afraid to bring it up tonight after all this discussion of trash and manpower and whatnot and some discussions pertaining to that. And, you know, the idea came of, you know, people coming into Bristol, especially during the summer, or even winter walks on the bike path, and I am aware that the state does not have any receptacles, and there must be a good reason why. Walter does have, I apologize to my colleagues for some more refurbished items, but Walter does have a meeting with the DEM tomorrow where he's going to give me more feedback on their reasons why and whatnot. What I was looking for, and the conversation did come up with the new recyclable barrels, but when these are going to be in a residential area on the west side of Bristol at the intersects, I think it also has to be aesthetic if we do go forward with this. And there's about seven intersects, and after thinking about it, the amount of pickups, will they be overfilled? And these are in residential areas. So these are a lot of questions that have to be answered. I'm looking for more of a small, smaller version on a pole, and maybe just in the beginning of the bike path and in the middle, and maybe in an intersect road where the houses aren't by those intersects. There are a couple in our town that are like that, where it's just woods as the people are going through, and it could be placed on town property. But again, the design and the strategy, along with the Administration, Department of Public Works, and Parks and Recreation, is if we would do those locations, when would be the pickups? We know Wednesday is the trash route in the middle of the week on the west side where they would all be. So I would just like to continue this to the second meeting in July after I get some more feedback from Walter and more discussion with the Administrator to present to my colleagues.
It's a good idea. I heard that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion?
And while we're at it, I think we should make sure that we can, yeah, yeah, the big belly, whatever it's called, because, I mean, we need to be able to take care of the downtown. I mean, because we can't even keep that looking neat on the weekend. So we need to.
You are absolutely right. That's why I didn't have the N1, because the end is Independence Park, and that would be a perfect place for it.
That's where all the trash ends up, but your suggestion's great.
So there's a motion and a second to continue to our July, what is it, please, again?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is bid 858. This is for the HVAC upgrade replacement projects at the Town Hall, the Police Station, and Quinta Gamblin Community Center. There was one bid received from Automatic Temperature Controls Incorporated with a bid amount of for Town Hall, $32,489. The Police Station, $91,422. And for the Quinta Gamblin Community Center, $176,816.
So I recall Councilman Harrisoff asking this question all the time. So if I'm correct, because there is one applicant, that means that we can have discussion with them about the dollars, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Doesn't it? That's not a good Halsey impersonation, but you got the gist of it. This third one for Quinta Gamblin was $176,000. Did we have an idea of what this was going to be? Was this in keeping with it? Because the Town Hall sounded very appropriate, so.
We have a meeting this week with the contractor. And we're going to find out why he believes it's that high. We weren't anticipating that. And I can assure you, we're not going to spend that, so.
So I'll see if I can give my other Halsey impersonation and say, we're going to, I think it would be appropriate to refer this to the Administrator to negotiate in the best interest of the people of Bristol.
Second.
All right. That wasn't my motion, I was asking for one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? No? I'm looking forward to this, Mr. Administrator, to have air conditioning working here correctly and not go "ploo" when it comes on. So I can't do that again, please don't ask.
I thought you were referring to your Halseys.
Yeah, all right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item J2 is from the Treasurer, and this has to do with the use of the sewer fund reserves to match a grant.
Julie.
So there was a motion made back in the April 5 meeting. Unfortunately, Jose and I both couldn't attend that evening. So the motion was to transfer funds from the Enterprise Fund to the Water Pollution Control Fund. So the terminology was the issue there. The Enterprise Fund, in this motion, referred to that group of accounts that holds the debt service and overhead line items in the budget, and the intention was to transfer, to request a transfer from the Enterprise Fund's fund balance. And this is to benefit the, actually, the generators that Diane referred to earlier. We received a generous grant for that, but the match was $37,350. So we're requesting that we utilize the Enterprise Fund's fund balance, which has approximately $2 million in it, for that grant match, since it was not budgeted, because we didn't know that we were going to receive this grant.
Okay, so you need a motion to, help me.
Need a motion to appropriate up to $37,350 from the Sewer Department's fund balance.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I was scribbling. Who's motion, who's second?
Tim and me, I think.
Yeah? Thank you.
Anybody? All right, cool. We're all happy with it.
Next also is an additional executive session request, which we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. And next following are the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the Chairman.
So I'll start off on the challenging one. We, at our last meeting, talked about the appeal, or the denial of the appeal for the lawsuit between Bristol and Warren in regards to the schools. I have heard some crazy things out there, that we're going to move Rockwell over to put it on top of Gitteras, and so we're doing nothing except research at this point in time. No decisions would be made or will be made without lots of dialogue with all the appropriate parties, and that includes the input from the public. So just so, I just want to put that aside, no decision is, has been made. This is a, we're in research mode. In fact, part of our executive session includes some of that research and some of the things we found in our next steps. So just for clarity, there is a bill at the State House that was proposed by the Speaker, and it has to do with property tax on cars. And although it sounds great to get rid of our car tax, because I would be happy to have that, too, that is funds that we use for keeping the lights on, if you will. If it doesn't come from that, it has to come from something else. The bill, in my opinion, is flawed, because it, our car tax right now is about 1735. I'm doing it off the top of my head. If this bill were to pass, there are places like Providence that have a $76 property tax, which is crazy. So this would not, in my opinion, be equitable in any way, shape, or form. I share this with you, because I would love to get rid of the car tax, too, but it doesn't, this whole step does not make sense in my head. We had Memorial Day exercises on Memorial Day, right? It was a really, really rainy day, so it was held inside the Bristol Train of Artillery Building. I found out the Ginny Hansen was supposed to be the Chief Marshal, but because of the rain kept that from happening. I was amazed on how much Ginny Hansen, and she doesn't live in Bristol, does for Bristol. This woman is amazing, which also kind of opened my eyes to a couple of other things. We had the unveiling of the MIA chair, which is in Town Hall, and I'm pointing at it right now, I know you can't see it at home. And also, the next day was the Sergeant Andrew McKenna Memorial. There were so many phenomenal things that happened in Bristol, and I joked around that it wasn't around the, it's not the Fourth of July. Fourth of July is phenomenal. But when it's not the Fourth of July, we have tremendous people who give of themselves and ask absolutely nothing in return. And in fact, Ginny asked Carl to stop, because she was getting embarrassed on all the things that she's done. Tremendous woman, and she's representative of so many people in Bristol, our veterans in particular, the work that they're doing to fix their own VFW. The roof had some issues there, and they're working on that. So my point is to bring this up, is that we have Flag Day coming up on the 14th. It's not just about the veterans, but it is about the veterans. We're here today because of good people. We'll stand in front of a bullet so we can put our kids to school, we can talk about transferring money from one account to another. These things are very important, but they wouldn't happen without the good men and women that have done what they've done. And Memorial Day, Veterans' Day, Fourth of July, these are, these are days that we can smile and we remember this, but we need to remember them, too. And I know we do, and that's, I got to tell, I've said this before, I look at the flag, I have a new reverence for it. I did not know, in fact, Director McBride brought a couple of things to my attention. I have flags out in front of my house. I had them backwards. I had the state flag on this side, and sorry, the other way around. And Kevin brought to my attention, there's a lot of reasons, and it's not so you can say, see, I did it right. It's respect for the people, our veterans. So I wanted to bring that up and say that happy Fourth of July to everyone. That comes around really, really fast. Flag Day's on the 14th. Come, that is the kickoff, and it's the concerts, and it's the burgers, and if you drink beer, sometimes you have a beer in the backyard, I don't know. It's the kids holding their sparklers and their flags. It's a phenomenal time to be a Bristolian. And I got to tell you, I was someplace today, and I said, I live in Bristol, and they said, oh, you have a Fourth of July parade, don't you? And I said, yeah, we do. Yeah, we do. So it's a wonderful place to be, and I know my colleagues and I, and everyone here are proud to serve the people of Bristol. So happy Fourth of July.
Mr. Sweeney.
Happy Fourth of July, you guys. I hope you have a great time. Get out there, see the festivities, enjoy the town. Have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Tiska.
Happy Fourth of July. And tonight was both the band concert at the Middle School and the athletic awards for the high school. So my daughters are present at both. Sorry I couldn't attend, but congratulations to both of you and all of you athletes and scholars out there. So with that, happy Fourth of July and good night.
Ms. Perella.
Okay, well, a couple of things. Well, thank you, Nathan, for your comments, because that's what I was going to bring up as well. No, seriously, I mean, I wanted to congratulate the Bristol Veterans Council. They did an outstanding job, as they always do, but this weekend was, this past Memorial Day weekend was really chock full of activities. And I don't know if it's possible, either at this meeting, at the end of this meeting, or before the next meeting, if Mike could maybe even take a picture of the, and show the chair, because that's quite amazing.
Great point.
And I give them a lot of credit for bringing that forward and getting that into as many public buildings around the state and around the region as possible. The McKenna Memorial was awesome, to see that get done. He was such a, such a hero in saving so many lives. And the Memorial Day celebration itself, and it's true about Ginny Hansen, she's always been around, as long as I can recall, and is a very active vet, very active woman to that, and it's awesome to see her out there. I wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July, as those activities kick off next week. Congratulate the class of 2017 from Mount Hope High School. I believe that graduation is this weekend. Wish all of you who are fathers, Happy Father's Day, because we won't be meeting again until then. And then, I hate to do this, but I have one question for you, Steve, and that is about the rocks at Wally Beach. Has that been addressed yet, or, I know that, you know, the Director had been out? No?
It is on our radar screen. We talked about it. We met with Walter out at the site, so it has not been done, to answer your question, but it's, it's in the planning right now.
Will it get done so that people can use the beach this summer without the rock?
That's the plan.
Okay, good. Very good. Well, thank you all very much.
Mr. Stewart.
I'll try to keep it quick. I've got a couple of items. Yes, the chair is beautiful. The dedication of the monument memorial for Andrew McKenna is beautiful. I did feel very bad, I was out of state with my son, but I did get to attend Memorial Day. Ginny Hansen, as you specified, Mr. Chairman, well worthy of that day, along with our troops and everything. But I want to thank Director Yarn, who gave some such great words on Memorial Day, but I really would like to thank him for his community engagement, for coming down for our veterans this past Saturday morning here at the Burnside Garden, as a public town meeting, as an outreach for our veterans, to help them of whatever services or needs they may have. And we all have to do that, not only his administration, his department, but here as the council administration, and be here all the time, as we all know, for our veterans, our seniors, and everybody. So he's doing that in every community, and I just would like to thank him. I think it's a great department that was added to the Cabinet of Rhode Island, and he's doing wonderful things. To the Fourth of July, I'd like to thank, congratulate Robert Squatrito, this year's Hattie Brown Award winner, along with Miss Fourth of July, Olivia Borja, and Little Miss Fort Angela Perry. And also the Fireman's Memorial, the mass is at 11:30 at St. Mary's this Sunday, with the parade at 1 o'clock. And I would just like to thank the second grade, Miss Vieira's class at Code Andrews. This week is Reading Week, and it was my pleasure to read to the children. Such a great school, great class and children, very engaging, a lot of questions, so I want to thank them. Steve, if you could go through your administration, I believe, to the state or whatever, I noticed downtown, and I know during Fourth of July, we do a cleanup of the trees, and there's a lot of low-lying tree limbs on the sidewalks as we're walking. If that could just, you can communicate on that approach, because other than that, and we're also on the business owners of their banners to constantly put up their bracket for all our pedestrians walking on those sidewalks, that you don't, you know, get a little extra in your mouth as you're walking down, so.
That is an issue on High Street as well.
And I believe my colleagues touched on everything else. I'd just like to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July, you and your families, Happy Father's Day. I want to just thank all the departments that are going to be putting in the long hours and your hard work. Thank you, Mike Davis, Sergeant Arms, Archie Martins, and everybody who came out tonight, and everybody tuning at home. Have a good night.
And Town Administrator Agenda Items.
Thank you. First off, I'd just like to comment on the great deal of work that we've been doing. It's been a very wet spring, so we've got, it seems to be on a daily basis that we get complaints of stormwater, potholes, and tree limbs. And I can assure you, the DPW and the men and women there are, have their laundry list to do, as the Director said earlier. And we will get to all of them. We'll see them, see all these projects through, and we'll stick with it. One other comment I'd like to make, it's about, you know, adding to our existing infrastructure, and, you know, we can add recycling bins and trash cans and different items that are out there, but it's real important that we have the manpower and the funding to maintain what we have. And this is something I've been saying since I've came into office. Today, I have a positive note, and I'm going to, I'm not going to steal Director Williamson's thunder, but we have something that fits into what I just stated, and includes maintenance. So if you would, Diane.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, this is a great, a great thing to report out. We, the Town of Bristol recently received a grant from Commerce RI. It's a Main Street, Streetscape Improvement Program grant, in just over $40,000. And it will be used on Wood Street between State Street and Bayview to repaint lampposts, install decorative medallions on the lampposts, bike racks, new trash cans, and new recycling receptacles along, along the street. And it was, it was just really neat to see how this came together, because one of the local businesses reached out to us and talked to Jessica and said, you know, we've got these lampposts, and how do we get them painted? And I think, right around the same time, the Town Administrator said, you know, how do we get these lampposts painted? And then this grant landed on our, on our desk. So. So it is really cool, and the idea is to make the business districts more walkable, vibrant, and, and welcoming. Bristol is the only municipality to receive two grants from Commerce RI under this program back to, in back-to-back years, we got a grant last year for the wayfinding signs. So we've also got the Mosaiaco Community Development Corporation as a partner with us on the match, and so it's a really good community program, and it's going to do a lot to make that Wood Street neighborhood shine. The work, the design work will be by the Steel Yard, and it's going to be unique to the Wood Street neighborhood, so it'll really, you know, give them some identity and, and like placemaking, so. So that's it.
Nice job.
That's it.
Thanks. And also, just an update, it's, it's slow going, but the Prudence Island Dock, it's, it's moving along, concrete's being poured, and the Highway Director is going to be advertising for the road paving, which will start after the Fourth of July, so, oh, it's going out tomorrow, so that'll be advertised, and we're gonna, want to comment on that, please?
Yeah, I just want to make sure Lou has that on July 5th agenda. I know we're limited, but the bids are being opened that day, and I'm just, it's all about timing and keeping the project moving, but we are moving forward, it's being advertised tomorrow, and, so we're moving ahead.
There was never a question about that.
Yeah, we're sticking with it. Positive notes, British Motor Car Festival this weekend, looking forward to that, Holy Trinity Feast this weekend at St. Elizabeth's, Flag Day next Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Congratulations to the seniors at Mount Hope High School and their parents for another successful class Saturday night. And just a, a thank you to, to students at Mount Hope High School and the administrators there that bailed me out, we needed a couple of trumpeters yesterday for the Portuguese flag raising ceremony, so thank you, students Malloy and Roy for coming out at very short notice, and they played both anthems, and they did a very, very good job, so, thank you, and that's all I have.
Motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to 4246-5A2 litigation relative to the Bristol Warren School District and 4246-5A5 relative to lease the parking lot at the corner of Thames and Church Streets.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any opposed? Hey, I'll leave with this, all these people sitting over here, I know the Administrator asked you to come, we appreciate it, it's great to have the information at hand, and the public appreciates it too. Good night, everyone.